About Lafayette, you know, the way you move forward with it. Because it's going to be an overlay or a full reconstruct. And so I've done some engineering for the city before and as an impartial kind of third party, just to give you some, some of my thoughts and agreeings with overlays and redstructions. So I just went around, took a few photos of projects that I, I know of that have overlays and and so let's start with those, let's pass, if you want to pass it on and then we can kind of look at these and then start with this. So I guess everybody knows the project, right, the Lafayette Road project, you're obviously quite familiar with the roadway itself and the condition that's in right now. So, you know, with the, the options really being, you know, do we, can we resurface the roadway, either concrete is there and resurface it and get a good life out of that, that resurfacing and have that be an effective use of the city's money. So these, these, you know, photos I have here are some overlays. The thing with an overlay is that especially in a road like this, you really can get, you know, a four or even five inch overlay. Every existing crack that or every joint that's in that roadway will translate through to the top when you, when you put that overlay on. There's a, there's a product called an asphalt interlayer that, that you can put down, so it's still, still asphalt, but it's a, a layer that has a special mixed design, so it tries to prevent every type of cracking. But a roadway like this one that, that looks like it's, you know, got a lot of joints and a lot of, it's really living a lot. And that is usually not effective for a long time in preventing the, the cracks from translating through to the surface. And so these photos, you can kind of see, like, this one on the very front here is a project that we did in, in 2019 in City of Cedar Rapids where, where we're using asphalt interlayer. So you're probably four years old, you can see there are already cracks coming through. You see the centerline cracks right down the middle of that, that roadway, and that is just a transverse crack, so you know, a crack that across the roadway. And what that looks like, four years old. I think, you know, you look at the roadway, looking down the roadway, it's still smooth. So there, so you do get that, there's definitely a smoothness improvement. But you say, well, does it gonna look like a brand new roadway even four years later? Probably not. The next, the next page is a project in, in I have a city, this one's actually just overlaid last summer. And they did not use the asphalt interlayer, and you can see the, again, the roadway looks smooth, you just look down the roadway. But, no, right, that's just a picture of a crack that's played through from the, from the pavement. You can see that this one is kind of particularly problematic where it's a real jagged crack and then also it has like this extra little piece that looks like it's gonna pop out or probably get a pothole in the next, you know, couple of years also. So another roadway where they spent, you know, probably millions of dollars, two million dollars to overlay that and, and hatch cracks coming through. Now, was it an improvement over what those there, definitely it's still an improvement, right, the roadway's in pretty bad condition before, so, so it's definitely a smooth improvement. The third picture. And that's this one on Wilson Avenue in Cedar Rapids, so that's another one where, where that roadway's overlayed, you know, quite a few years ago. But this is kind of what it looks like over time then too, so one of those cracks if you really have to be filled in with asphalt material, like an asphalt mineral material to stop water coming down into the roadway. And so not only do you get the cracks that come through, but then you have to do, do the maintenance over time and it kind of tends to not look so great after a while. So the last picture then is a picture, it's kind of hard to see, but, but this is a project that I worked on a few years ago now, I guess, almost twenty years ago. And on the, this is actually the photo from, from 2020. And you see the, the left side, kind of the bottom left of the picture. On this project, we actually did another project with it, with the interlayer and part of it without it. So the bottom left, you see, was done in 2003 and doesn't have a lot of cracks. Whereas, you know, coming through, whereas the other one was done in 2005 and you can see all the tracks and you'll see all the the transverse cracks kind of translating through on the, on the photo there. Now, the one thing I will note, there is, there is one, it's hard to pick up, but right down the, the stripe, the dash line, stripe if you had down southwest on this page, that is a large tunnel crack that's actually come through, that's actually separated quite a bit. So again, the asphalt interlayer did prevent all the cracking, but it does delay it quite a bit. So, you know, that's, that's our experience with, with the asphalt interlayer projects. I guess my overall takeaway from this is that if you think that it'll look like a brand new road five years from now, it won't. If you have a, if you repaint it with concrete, it was a full depth, you know, Portland State concrete reconstruction in five years, it'll pretty much still look like a brand new road. Ten years from now, you know, there's gonna be a lot of, you know, where you saw the, the asphalt seal around the cracks, you're gonna need to do that, that's will look like probably ten, fifteen years from now. And then twenty years down the road, you could be in a position where you need to resurface it again or, or at least start to budget for upcoming resurfacing, so. So that's usually the kind of life you get out of a asphalt overlay versus a concrete, concrete. I think I've really been there for, was it, you know, almost fifteen years now?
Eighty-two.
Yeah, so quite a long, quite a long time, so you definitely got your money's worth out of that.
Yeah, it doesn't also die.
Exactly. So I wouldn't say that if we did another concrete road in the last eighty-two years, that's a long time. But at the same time, you know, you could get thirty years out of it and have, you know, not a lot of, a lot of maintenance like you would on an overlay. So happy to answer any questions, kind of by two cents. I know there's a big dollar difference, so yeah, what questions do you have?
Well, one thing, one reason I wanted Adrian to come and speak with us is he stopped by one day, him and Ryan, and we got talking about the project. And I, one of my biggest concerns is not only overlaying this road that it seems to reject any kind of repair we've ever made to it, right? Is we're gonna widen the road as well. So then where you have asphalt is what we're gonna use to widen it up against that really, really super hard rock concrete. And that's gonna be the driving lane, so you're gonna get separation right away.
Yeah, so that, again, that one that's hard to see on this photo, you know, there's this, it says dark line that goes right down the, the lane divider line. You would have, you know, that's where they, you know, filled with asphalt material to try to keep that crack. But that crack, if you, you know, look at it, you get a good picture of it, you know, but it's probably, you know, inch wide, I would say. So you'll definitely feel that as you're driving down. In this case, it sounds like with the, with the roadway, that's kind of be right on a wheel path to.
Yeah, exactly.
So, you know, again, is it the end of the world, you know, maybe not, but certainly for, in the money you're spending, it's not gonna feel like a new roadway for a long time, probably.
And I did put in front of you the three estimates. One was doing a current overlay, this is what their price has increased to in the last four years because originally it was been around one point eight, so we're up to two point six million. So, and then you're, the, the next one is doing a, and that's from Bowman Lake, that's doing a rural road construction using subgrade. And you wanna, the subdrain, do you want to explain the subdrain to them a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Of how that will help with the flow of the waterway.
Yeah, so Eppesdale is kind of a, it's, it's good and bad where your soils are really sandy. So that's good in the fact that water can get away. So, so having water trapped beneath your pavement, that's what causes all of the movement, you know, and, and you see like cracks opening separating or joints separating. That's from the water being trapped there and just the freeze thaw cycle, you know, that goes through. You'll see it in the winter time, like the whole thing will heave. And then as you get to the, those months where you're kind of back and forth between hot, cold, you know, during evening and daytime, you start to do, that's where you start to get a lot of movement. And so what the subdrain does is it allows, so that's a, a small pipe that runs along each side and connects into the storm sewer and it just drains all the water out of the rain, so it keeps it dry. So you don't get that freeze thaw and then, then, then moves the pavement up and down. The nice thing is Eppesdale has to get the sandy soil to let the water go out, so that's helpful. But at the same time, they also let water in. And so if you don't put in subdrain, then you tend to have water below your pavement quite a bit. And the sandy soils also hold a lot of water because there's a lot of open space in that sand, you know. And so they hold a lot of water and that freeze thaw happens, you know, more drastically than you might see in other places too. So that's the nice thing, yeah, if you do the overlay, I think even in your overlay project, you're planning to add in subdrain on the edges, right, even if you did the overlay project, you're still gonna add some subdrain on the edges. But I don't know if that was in the estimate or not, I guess, I, I would if I were doing that. The problem is you don't have a chance, if we're gonna do a brand new pavement, we would get rid of that sandy top layer and replace that with a, a, a rock, you know, like a gravel, like a really open, ungraded gravel, so the water can just go right out to those subdrain materials and, and get out more into pavement, go straight to the subdrain. So it, that does provide a, a, a much better base to build your pavement on and it'll help it last a lot longer too. So it's not just a pavement, it's, it's not just a pavement cost, it increases the cost between overlay and whatever is, is the, the base rock if I didn't do it. Other questions? Got a good explanation or still have? It is a considerable price difference, you know. And it's up to you guys to decide whether it's, you know, which one is right with the city. But just wanted you to be aware of what you're getting.
Full thickness concrete, if you're thinking, estimating like thirty years?
I would say that you'd probably get more than thirty years total out of that pavement. But at thirty years, you're probably looking at some repairs, you know, maybe some patching, kind of thing, yeah.
So minimal maintenance, you're kind of saying for thirty years?
I would like to think that you would get that, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you can see what the cost difference is and then even to do like a curving gutter, Ron and I talked about that quite some time ago. And then we just touched base again here recently. But that subdrain kind of works the same thing as, you know, getting the water away. Because his, Ron's concern was, there is a water issue in that area. You know, to the north of, to the north of Lafayette, it used to be a swamp. So, you know.
Yeah, and that really is the number one thing that degrades pavement over time is having that water below it. If you can control that, then, then really it should last quite a while.
This is something we're doing tonight, right, Mayor Martin?
Oh, no, no, oh, no, we're just, we're, we need, we need to make a decision though on which way we're gonna go. We're just gonna go with the overlay and take our chances, we need to get going on that. If, if you guys, you know, take some time to think it over and what you're spending, this one will be. What you're spending, you know, you could be spending another two, two million dollar more, you know, do a, a road use geo bond, you know, that could be paid off in time, and then you're gonna, you're gonna have that much more life, you know, on that roadway. Or you didn't spend two point six million and have, you know, five to ten year life.
Yeah, so, so if you're, you know, you ask my advice on this particular roadway, it's like you said, you've gotten your money's worth for sure out of this roadway over time. The other thing is, you know, the way, the way it is now with so many joints for, you know, patches and those kind of things, that every one of those is gonna come through. So, you know, some of these pictures where you see like, oh, there's a joint here, you know, you see some joints, that kind of thing. Like those, every one of those comes through and then all of a sudden it's like, boy, this really is a patchwork and it's a lot more work to, to keep it maintained over time. And two, yeah, maybe the ride is smoother, but, you know, then Chris or somebody asks you out there and, and slip that tar down all those cracks and it just starts to really look like it's falling apart, even though maybe it's smoother and has a smoother ride, it just, you know, looks terrible. And then, you know, you get those sort of sort of life value because even if you, even if you fill in those cracks, there's a time, you know, when those cracks are filled in before you come to do the maintenance that, that's getting water down in there and again, upgrading the pavement, so.
You know, if we're really looking to do that road, knowing we have water issues up there, not only just for widening it, making it a nicer road, I think we need to make sure we're looking at our due diligence for our citizens up there as well. And if, if we can do something about the water and with this project, I think it needs to be considered for sure. Because it, it has been one of the worst areas in town, I know, and it's been a constant problem.
Yeah.
Okay, so this big, or this, that's, okay, this theme's like this right now.
Sure. Okay, so the, the, the first one is our current, you know, they have to go through it, shy pattering. But that's just the overlay.
Okay, and that's like that two point six or?
Two point six, yes.
Okay, so this is just like, when you say overlay?
That's, that's what he's talking about, the asphalt overlay, right?
Yeah, he's trying to just put asphalt.
Yeah. And the, and the more of the problem is, and you can see on Lafayette, all the repairs that have been made. Because you have this, unless you spent the money and used like concrete, this concrete is full of rocks, of, of river rocks. It's very sturdy for it to last eighty-two years. Yes, it's very sturdy. So, you know, you're gonna have, you're gonna have that flexibility against that road. And you can see all the repairs, I think with the exception of two repairs that have been made on that road, they're all breaking away. So it's, it's the difference of the concrete. You have this really heavy, solid river rock concrete and then you have to stain the concrete up to date.
Okay, so then page two is what?
Page two is to do a rural footprint. So say you drove down Independence Avenue, for example, I, I don't know if that's concrete or.
And so rural would be no, no curve on the sides. It's just, you know, like, anything comes straight off and then goes straight to the ditch like it is now. So there's no, no curve on the side.
But with widening even as well.
With widening, yeah.
That means you would tear up all the old concrete.
Okay.
That old eighty-two old concrete has already begun. And you're, you're starting all over again, you're laying rock and rerouting and all that to make a firm foundation.
And would that add more time to the project?
Definitely.
Yeah.
And are, and are we like doing an estimate of like, I mean, and this ballpark, like how long that would take versus the first one?
Uh, your asphalt overlay is always gonna take less time.
Yeah, in this case, you have to build the shoulders, so there's gonna be some time, you know, because you're gonna widen the road also with asphalt overlay. There'll be some time on that, but then when they put down asphalt overlay, like in this section, they could do that probably in a matter of, you know, a few days. Whereas a reconstruction, you're leaving it, tear it all out, you know, put down your base. And then the paving will happen quickly, you know, again, over just a few days, but there's a lot more work to do there. So it does take longer.
And then page three is everything, curb gutter, overlay, widening.
Page three is just a complete reconstruction with curving gutter and stormwater.
Sidewalks too?
Yeah, on the, the, yeah, on the south side. That's been, that was part of our.
How come we don't do it on both sides? Could be to walk and.
We will, if you want to pay the extra.
Yeah, now listen.
This is not in your plans right now.
No.
This, we're discussing right now with the engineer, you'll have your time to speak.
And so like if we just did, I'm just trying to make sure I can't, if, if there was just an overlay, your estimated time would be only a couple of years out of it last or, or longer?
Um, so, so the overlay itself, I would think you'd probably need to replace that overlay, you know, fifteen to twenty years down the road, you'd be wanting to look at replacing that.
Okay.
And just for safety and numbers, obviously cost moving, but we could be looking at two point six million again in fifteen to twenty years.
Well, not quite, because you're adding the shoulders, so you wouldn't have to do the shoulders again, right? So you would just kind of just mill off that, that overlay you put on and then redo it, so it could be, you know, what you're talking about, pitching your.
Exactly.
I kind of liken the differences of how the water looked at University Avenue, you know, and patched it and overlated and patched it and overlated over the last twenty damn years. And they finally got ahead and reconstructed it. And that was a good road, so.
With full on concrete?
Yeah, full on concrete.
Yeah, the other one I guess would, would be, so the, one of these pictures, the one that I had, the, the hero photo where you're looking down at that project, the City of Cedar Rapids, that's the project I designed twenty years ago. And they're now like where they're gonna resurface that road. So first, that's first half of Cedar Rapids, it gets a lot more traffic, but it's still the same thing, it's, you know, the traffic in that case wasn't really what killed it, it's just that, that movement and all those joints opening up over time.
And the overlay, the option one type, just the overlay really would not address much of our water flow control, correct?
Some, but, but not near as much as.
It would actually address it, yeah.
If you cut that down, you're gonna cut it down, so what's it gonna do with services on the?
The.
Or the elevation of the, I mean, you're lowering the elevation, you're so.
Um, we wouldn't lower, we'd probably keep the road about the same elevation that it is now.
That elevation is the country road elevation, yeah, the houses are down here, the road's up there.
Yeah, we would keep that elevation the same probably. If we did the, the full reconstruct with the curving gutter, then you would look at lowering the roadway probably because otherwise, you know, the, you have to get that curving gutter in there, right? So, so to do the full reconstruct with curving gutter and storm sewer and the whole, that, that last dust in there that.
To me, that's the only way to go, do it, do a ride.
We're already in the millions, yeah, we can triple our time and do a ride and address water issues and.
They can have sidewalks and sidewalks and everything else and everybody else.
If you add curving gutter to it, like, like the number three, if you add curving gutter to it, will it make it a stronger, a stronger, will it last longer?
Yeah.
Like, the second one would be like thirty years, but I'm imagining that if you add a way to get rid of the water and stuff, maybe.
Yeah, I think it's probably, this is for sure the best product, yeah, overall, like, you know, because with that, you would also put in storm sewer, right? So that's the, it's a big cost difference, there isn't really the extra for the curb or whatever. So, so when you have curb, you still have to have a good way to get rid of the water. And then you need to put storm sewer to do that, so you have the storm inlet, so like you have an urban street and then storm sewer. And put a storm sewer in, usually, in this case, we leave the, you know, as you're laying the sections of concrete pipe for that, you would leave the joints open and let water just go into that, so it acts like a giant drain essentially to just totally de-water that roadway base. So that's again, probably what, you know, if it gives you more life, it's probably that, because, you know, more than like just the strength of a curb or something like that.
And you can look at West Gilbert, it's, it's forty plus years old at this point, so.
Yeah, you know, the, the places, we use, you know, asphalt overlays quite a bit, the places you see those usually are roads that are still in pretty good shape, you know, they're still okay, but they're getting some deterioration. And it's a way to just increase the life of that overlay. So here, you know, and you can see like you're, you're looking at costs, like, you know, the overlay is half the cost, you get half the lifespan out of it. And during that half the lifespan, you're doing constant maintenance, right? So, you know, if you have a lot of roads that are kind of aging but not necessarily destroyed yet, you know, Cedar Rapids uses a lot of, of overlays just to, to extend the life of those roadways essentially. So it's a, it's a way to kind of just pay as you go and continue to do those things. If you're looking to do a one and done and not have to worry about it for a long time, then you should, and, or your road is, again, like at this stage, you know, giving you a pretty long service life already and that's really probably beyond the point of overlay. Like the reconstruction is the way to go.
I think you're gonna do it twice for the same longevity period.
Exactly.
At least, yeah.
Easily twice. Right, in the, in that timeframe, you're, you're spending the same amount of money over the next, you know, forty, fifty years. The only question is, you know, you, you know, so the one way you get a brand new road for a lot of that time essentially, and the other way you're kind of just keeping it going along.
So how far does the road go down on plan three? We're talking about heights here and underground infrastructure. How far will the road go down from what we see it today?
Yeah, so you'd lower it at least probably eight to ten inches. So you gotta go down the, the height of curb, which is six inches, and then beyond that, there's a grade from the curb up to the sidewalk, you know, so you need to lower it, so you need the sidewalks down essentially, so you're looking at probably eight, ten inches, maybe a foot, something like that from where it is now.
Yeah.
What are the three costs?
What's that?
What are the three costs?
Oh.
Just out of curiosity.
To do the overlay, two point six million, five thousand. To do the, um, put it to a rural road as it is today with expansion of the roadway. And it would have subdrain, right now it does not have subdrain. Four point eight, four point eight million. And then to do, and these are, these are, these are all estimated costs, you know what I mean? Just as we've been talking through the whole project. And then a total reconstruct with curving gutter and storm grade, five point five million.
I guess I have a question there. Would we bond for all this or would we put assessments against property owners? What would be your protocol going forward?
Well, I think our first step would just be, you know, as far as road use, they have all their, this year, um, this fiscal year that we're in right now, they're gonna have all their debt paid. So that would be the first, I think the first step we would look at is, is what would it be to, to do the bonding? Now, I've never heard of, and I'll ask that same question. Have you ever had, where, to do the roadway, you were doing asking from the property owners?
Not for the roadway, I've never seen anybody, you know, unless there was a, a petition assessment agreement already in place. So like say a developer built a roadway and, and they said, you know, we're gonna build a substandard, but you can come back later and do it on the road cost. That's the ones I've never ever seen that. The only other thing that I've seen people assess for is sidewalk border, but even that has fallen off, it really is. I mean, in the last, you know, twenty, you know, five years I've been doing this, I, I think we assess for one sidewalk. And again, that was a place where they had a petition assessment agreement in place with the developer. And the developer said, there's no sidewalk anywhere near us right now, why should I put a sidewalk? And so, and so they, you know, they said someday when you build the road, you know, or fix the road, put a sidewalk and hope for that. And that was the only reason we did that. So even in cities like Cedar Rapids, they have, you know, they, for a long time, they had sidewalk assessments for houses and, and they stopped doing it.
Really?
A decade ago or so, yeah, yeah, assessing for sidewalks. Yeah.
Yeah, while there doesn't, you know, we were planning on doing a small sidewalk project this next year.
Uh, does this reset from what the original Lafayette project, when it started? Depending on this?
No, that's why.
And will we still get the money that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually what kind of started this, some of this whole thing was I was talking to Adrian. And I, I've actually reached out to a lot of people, I've talked to a county engineer, I've talked to, I think the, several of the people I talked to were like Adrian said, unbiased. They, they don't have anything to gain or, or lose by whatever way we decide to do the project. So anyway, it, it's definitely gonna be a betterment for the city and, and not just be canned down the road on this project, so.
That's why I was just wondering if it had, would it be the same start date from what the original was?
Yeah, and that's why.
And that money that was already, I guess, the grant or whatever it was, just rolls into the, okay?
Yeah, and I actually applied for Congresswoman Ashley Henson, had some hometown grant funds available. And I did apply for that and I talked to her office today. And we did not get that grant, and I did apply for two point six million because there was already DOT funding in place. So it doesn't mean I'm not gonna look at other grants, because I did talk to, I did talk to Adrian about other grants that I talked to. Ashley Henson's office about some of the grants as well, so. We just have to think what's, you know, it's, it's the bang for the buck kind of thing here, you know, we don't want in five or ten years to have to start doing what we're already doing.
Well, you're correct, I mean, we gotta be thinking about, I'm just, our overall investment, but maintenance costs, that's city time to wear, cold patch, repairs, cut them out, you know, just ongoing, time, materials. And then addressing another issue, you know, an issue that was known as been an issue with our water system, with our, you know, storm sewers and infiltration. So we're replacing all this, if we can go in and address that as well. And it not only makes a better road for everybody to use, but also improves the neighborhood for some of our citizens that have been there.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we're looking at some good options.
The other thing to consider on paving costs too is there's the maintenance of maintaining the pavement. But then road maintenance also, of course, snow removal, those kind of things, with a brand new road, snow removal, I'm sure Chris can attest, like, snow removal on a brand new road is much easier than it is on, on overlay, just because you get little, you know, ripples on the road and you just can't clean it.
I think it only makes sense to look at second or third option and. I think it only makes sense to look at second or third option and look for funding, where are we gonna be at versus what we got in mind right now and see where it comes in. Apples for apples and cons, I mean, it's pretty basic.
Well, I will, um, I will move forward as far as, you know, because we tend to need to to keep it on track of where we need to be, and that's fitting out in in December or January, so we can start this project in the spring. Um, we need to be at that point, so. Maybe just reach out to Maggie, I'll send you guys emails and stuff, what, you know, her, the response I get from her, what what we're looking at, if we give it to you or not, and you know, just like like I said, there's possibly other grades out there too that we'll explore.
And right now, we've got what covered by the, um?
One point seven.
Got a good start.
Yeah.
We need about three or four more.
Yeah, but it's better than, we're doing it on our own, it's, you know, to use that one point seven, what's the better, best way to spend that money as well? That we're getting from this state. Well, thank you, Adrian, I really appreciate your help. Jerry, did you have a comment you wanted to add to that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, um, number six is public discussion, anyone I'd like to speak, please come up to the podium, say your name and address, please.
For you?
I don't know, I mean, the topic goes on, uh, Grand Boulevard, I just have a question, I've been meaning to ask you this, you every time I come in, I forget about it. The contractors that are doing the small cell wifi.
Yes.
Um, who actually is in charge of that project?
Um, I have his name.
The reason I ask is if you go down Grand Boulevard and the holes where each and each is, is, uh,
Yes.
trenching drilling.
Yes.
They're filling them in with pure sand.
They're coming back though.
Are they?
Yeah.
Okay.
So once they, their their destination, destination place is back to River Course Road, okay, once that is done, we're getting a whole new crew that's coming in and and going through everything that they've already been at.
Okay.
That's just a temporary fix.
All right.
You know, they they come in with dirt and grass and, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I just noticed they're throwing pure sand, it's like, it looks like the beach that came from Florida.
Yeah, no. That's to keep you from putting your foot inside there.
I mean, I'll send my wife out there, sit in the sand if she wants to.
Spring in the ankle.
When she gets that feeling of sitting on the beach.
The beachfront property.
Anyone else would like to, um?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name's Steve Oringer, uh, I live at two seventeen Heather Avenue. Um, last meeting here, I asked about the lights up there on exit seventy, so I I called a buddy of mine and, uh, what the deal is, one of the cables broke.
Yes.
And it's between twelve and fifteen thousand to fix that cable, well, they don't have a big enough lift to reach it and get at it, but he did tell me that they are, that Musco Lighting is gonna take that over. And they're gonna have a ten year deal or something like that with Musco Lighting, and so they're gonna put one out there, and he said, yeah, this summer, and then one other one, maybe do that.
Yeah, well, no, I I reached out to him too.
Okay.
Um, and they told me they they were retrofitting that light.
Yeah.
And it's coming through this, this, and it was gonna be about July.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I just passed that on.
No, no, I'm glad you did, because I was like,
Yeah.
Um, I had to reach out to him for some other things anyway, so, about back in nine to three is over, but it goes lately, so. Anyone else this evening? Number seven, approval of the consent agenda, a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight, approval of the revolution, the resolution calendar?
Mayor, I I would make a motion to approve, I just have one question for the police chief, um, they went to that training class for the mountain on Phil's, what what did we get out of that or learn out of that might or be different or better for the police department, your fellow coworkers for that training expense?
Uh, the class was based mostly on, uh, internal investigation type stuff, if there's complaints um, from the public about officers and whatnot, dealt with disciplinary, uh, different ways to handle disciplinary issues. That was kind of the gist of the class.
All right, thank you, great time, I appreciate it.
And just on that note, I'm actually glad you brought it up, Steve, um, our officers have been going through, um, under Chief Dean's supervision, have gone through more training, I'd be proud to say, uh, tactical training, and, I mean, you can even name some of the training, I'm sure.
Well, we, the police department pays a a small nominal fee, uh, to the sheriff's office every year, I think it's like five hundred dollars. So we have the, uh, luxury of participating in their monthly training. So I've tried to implement that, uh, to take better advantage of it, so we've been trying to send people on a monthly basis.
Yeah, I'm just really proud that they're making this, and will be involved with all that training.
But it doesn't come without a cost, I mean, uh, we try to do that, uh, you know, working with, uh, scheduling, but sometimes in order to do that, it requires us to move schedules around and stuff, so. Um, there can be some overtime because of it, but, um, I think the the benefit outweighs the the small cost that it requires, so.
All right, thanks for your time, Michael.
I'll take a motion to approve, please.
You did say I'm approving.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bergman?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Smough?
Yes.
Siegel.
Yes.
Number nine, approved service agreement with Operation Threshold for FY twenty-three in the amount of twenty-four, twenty-five hundred is budgeted. Several years back, the auditors had stated, we can't just donate money to organizations without having a contract in place. So what we've been doing with Operation Threshold, because they do quite a bit in our city and for our residents, um, we do a service agreement per se with them, and it just kind of lists what they're gonna do, and we give the donation, and this is a budgeted donation that we do as part of our hotel motel funding every year.
Motion to approve Operation Threshold's twenty-five hundred dollar budgeted agreement, turn it in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution sixty-seven oh two, approving the discretionary spending limit for the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. Um, I did also send you a memo out, we had our pre-construction meeting, and, you know, this is something that they were a- actually asking for. Ben, it's up to you.
What, what all the, pretty detailed, just read your emails, man?
Well, right now, yeah, right now, it's, you know, we have a thousand dollars that I can approve unless it's an emergency.
Right.
And it could, it could be an emergency, but we don't know that for sure. So it's just giving, just for this project alone, if they're involved something, then they have twelve thousand, twenty thousand is a little much, you know, and you know, I'm gonna keep involved with you guys anyway if anything like this happens. But they wanted to be able to keep going on with the project, so they can stay on the pipeline.
So is this only for the duration of the project?
It is absolutely just for this project alone.
Who's the approving authority? For this, obviously, if we approve this dollar amount, who is that in the one?
That would be me.
Okay.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm gonna be in contact with y'all anyway.
Well, we need to have it going forward, so I'd make approval of Resolution sixty-seven oh two for the rehabilitation project at the syrup plant.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Nichols?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yeah.
Smough?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Siegel.
Yes.
Resolution sixty-seven oh three, you know, parking Lawrence Avenue from Central Avenue to Marion Street, um, and that is north and southbound traffic. Chief, did you wanna come up to the podium and speak on that?
Yeah.
This was actually, uh, recommendation by Chief Dean.
Uh, so I typically, if I have the time, I go when I sit, um, on Central Avenue, uh, when school's letting out at pointer and pointer. And I've noticed, um, cars have started to park on Lawrence, um, they turn off the central and they park on Lawrence. I took a picture and I'll pass this around to folks to look at, but, uh, I've seen it cause a lot of problems with, if cars are trying to come off of Lawrence onto Central and vice versa, cars trying to turn off the central on the Lawrence with these cars parked there, it gives, it kind of causes this log jam, and it makes it very difficult. These people are parking there so they can go pick up their kids, it just causes a lot of problem with the traffic.
Or teachers having a small break because they can't stop by the school.
Oh, yeah.
They come in, park on Marion too.
Oh, really?
So if you can imagine three cars wide there, it it comes, it gets difficult.
If that continues to back up traffic onto Central, I, you know, I, I, students at pointer, so I'm there multiple times, probably.
You want to go back? Yeah.
So yes, I I can attest even having to wait for Lawrence to let and and traffic turn in because Central's backed out, which then backs out the school, which then it just continues until one person can get that car out, so yeah, turning on that area to come in or out is busy during that time period. And I wanna say, Chief, is the the west side, is it no parking already?
I think so.
I gotta say, I honestly, one side, but again, it isn't.
I haven't, I don't see cars parked every hour, so, yeah.
Isn't it?
And I don't believe it is, because I went through, you know, this is all done by resolution, that resolution house about that thick.
Okay.
Uh, I went through there and.
It's not, okay. But I definitely have noticed when people are parking there, it's probably, it causes a big backup congestion issue, so. Any questions?
How many cars can sit in there to get me that many of them?
Well, like I say, if you have three cars wide, you got, uh, some people parked on the side there, and if you get one trying to come out and one trying to come in, it's
it's almost impossible.
So do you want, like, no parking on both sides, or just like?
Well, I would like to s- I would like to see at least, uh, no parking on the east side of Lawrence, maybe, maybe up to Marion, she might not even go that far out there.
Could, would you be able to do like something like no parking in between, you know, maybe Friday to like, like, I don't know, would that be, I don't, I don't know, like, if how many people are parking on, if they actually live there?
Yeah, we don't want disenfranchised any residents.
Yeah, people live there, sure.
I know, I used to live on, like, Bowling, right by Juwett, when Juwett was there.
Yeah.
And, like, people would park in front of my driveway, I couldn't get out, it was big pain, but if you.
Yeah, I suppose you could do no parking, you know, during certain hours in school, you know, in schools like that or something.
I don't know if that would help, just because I don't know, like, how many people live on that street, that would be upset about that.
Right, yep.
So what would you say, is six thirty to three thirty, or?
Well, I guess it depends on, if you wanna do it just during morning hours and afternoon hours, or however you wanna do it.
It's just.
Isn't it just a problem in the morning and after?
Yeah, but schools getting it, probably more so when schools getting out.
Yep.
I mean, that can affect too many people, so I just have it permanent, when you don't have.
Well, there's, I I guess they're trying to take into account maybe the residents that live there.
So it'd be like, like, two or three houses worth down that street?
Might be just one.
Yeah, I think so, isn't there just one, opposite corner?
Say that.
From Central in.
So just.
Yeah, from Central.
Yeah, it's Frankie and John.
I think, I think it's just one.
Yeah.
So, I mean, maybe it would just be better to see, just like, no parking on one side, and that would eliminate a lot of it, but I don't know. I don't, I mean, I.
So you're not having any problem with people parking on the west side?
No, not generally.
Okay.
It's it's just those folks.
But will they, if it's?
Yeah, like, they might, as long as you push them on that side.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, let's just do both.
Both sides, is it just?
To Marion or so many feet down, or?
Yeah.
I think like a forty foot, about zone.
Well.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know.
But I think we'd have to look at.
Yeah, for both sides, if it's just a couple of residents right there.
Forty foot, that'd be about two cars.
Since it's not necessarily super urgent or something, consider, what if we take it upon ourselves and warn them, and let's go check?
Yeah, let's go ask the residents.
Yeah, let's table it for now, and, yeah.
Yeah, table it for now, and folks can take some time to drive in.
Perfect.
And go talk to the residents.
Ian, don't we have an ordinance already that can't park on the mailbox side? Is that why they're not parking on the other side, because of the mailboxes?
I've had them multiple times on both sides.
And unfortunately, you know, when people are picking up their, um, children from school, they just park where they want and do what they want.
Yeah. So you need that.
Yeah.
How do you know more sitting?
It gives the officer sitting down there more enforcement to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Move in.
I know it was a big pain when I, when I, um, lived in front of Juwett, I mean, I would have to try to constantly tell people, you have to move because I gotta get out, or I gotta come into work, you know, come in, and people would still park in front of your yard, no matter what, so.
And as soon as you run them out and you go back to doing something else, somebody else pulls in, yeah, it's difficult.
Yes. Yes, yeah, I remember those things.
So I'll take a, a motion to table.
I'll make that motion to table in this time for further review.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Osborne?
Uh, yes.
Smough?
Yes.
Nichols?
No, I think we should do it now.
Bergman?
Yes.
Siegel.
Yes.
Always pushing the one, always doing it.
Probably be able to say no.
So, before, number twelve, request your approved memorandum of understanding with IBW, law number two eighty-eight. However, that being said, I laid in front of you the amendment, the amended copy, um, because I got a little carried away with, uh, I was thinking I was even giving them more than we requested during, but then, I apologize for that. I was going off their new rates instead of their old rates and whatever. I was doing a whole bunch of different scenarios for the union.
Mayor, I did.
Anyway, as amended.
I did one question, I respect your amendment, but come July first, these numbers stay the same moving forward.
That is correct.
I'd make a motion to approve this memorandum that IBW vote for two eighty-eight presented in front of us.
Second.
Excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Thirteen, request for mayor to approve the new pad at the new yard, uh, new yardway center location, and I apologize, um, Chris, do you have your phone?
Do I have?
I don't have the estimates, unless you wanna just take a short break and I can put them off from you. I didn't have them, um, we didn't have them, huh? Do you have them?
Sixty and ninety.
Yeah, what's that?
There were sixty and ninety, weren't they?
Yeah, it was, I mean, but they they're gonna wanna see them, I'm pretty sure. Do you guys want me to go ahead and print them?
Thank you. Intermission. Sessions are open. Oh, you're not, you're good.
Many, it's pretty machine, it's pretty popular. Oh, actually, it's pretty big. Yeah. So there's, this, there's no machinery, it's just pretty big. We have it at work. And you know what, I found the best thing to find those sheets are, they told me, when I got work, Windows. Oh, that's actually, yeah, I would go, the popcorn.
Yeah, we got one stationed.
Yeah.
Great taste popcorn, but there, yeah, there always a thing.
Yeah.
Steve, is that down by the school and stuff, is that your work?
Yeah, I know Frankie and John's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know where he's, like, my daughter's in class.
I would love to ask him on that.
If it's a, do you have people parked there really hard?
Yeah, I would just wonder, you know, like, how, if it would impact the whole people that work there.
I think that's fair.
Oh, they don't park on the driveway, you know, school, so they, sometimes people don't pay attention to the driveway, they park right in the driveway for the kids.
Listen, there's two driveways in question between Central and Marion.
One on each side?
One on each side, and they're right across each other.
Yeah.
So we could easily do, um, like, twenty foot, thirty foot, whatever it is, from that last driveway down to Central.
And then, other one side, is there really concern with, you know, having to park, because they have driveways and.
Go ahead, drive.
Park around that Marion if they do have gas, because that one house does curve a little lot.
They might be relieved too, the people that do live there, because they might have the same issue that you have, where they're just wanting people to.
Would we wanna have the time for a school, or are we gonna make it an all day thing? I don't think.
Because school, I don't think it's practical either, but school could get out any time during the night.
I, it's just that, if they don't care about just the, or maybe no parking, it's like, we're not worried about it, and.
I would say maybe we should reach out to the, with the two driveways you're questioning, and then.
I'll ask them.
Yeah, and then figure out a good resolution for this.
Couldn't they easily just say not working in school?
Steve, you wanna take my address, it's a ten seventy-five and eleven oh one.
The what now?
Ten seventy-five and eleven oh one.
That's just the corner, I was just, right?
Triple park people.
They're pretty much in the corner, yeah.
Yeah, they're pretty much in the corner, they're in the middle of the block between Marion and Central, yeah.
And we initially had approved this for next, uh, fiscal year's budget, but when we had our pre-constructions meeting, they told us they needed it done yesterday, so we're gonna be moving, um, through the yardway summit within the next couple of weeks.
Where's it going?
It's going right. It's going right, if, so if you look at, um.
I could probably pull it up, I'm just gonna be lazy and I think it's.
Yeah, if you look right here on the map. So here's the wastewater treatment plant right here, and here's the current yardway center.
Yeah.
Um, right here, it's gonna be right here.
So if you drive.
On the same side.
No, opposite side, so if you drive down to your wood, and you hit the little hill and you come down, if you watch, there's actually kind of in between the timber, there's kind of a dirt road that goes back into it, huge, it's clear.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And there's a chain across it?
I was wondering, yes, I was wondering.
Yeah.
That's where it's gonna be, that's the future home of the yardway center.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I was.
Yep.
I was wondering about that spot, it's seen a lot of dirt going back there from, from.
So we did get a, um, we originally had budgeted like a hundred and thirty-six thousand for this project, so, um, Chris and his guys are gonna do, um, some of the projects, so we pulled somewhat of it, some of it out of it, Chris did. Um, so we did get a low, uh, low bid from Aspro in the amount of sixty-one thousand one hundred dollars.
I'd make a motion, we just move on that.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just for clarification, those to accept the low bid of Aspro.
That is correct, yeah.
Right.
Opposed, sorry about that. Okay, fourteen, uh, council to consider fireworks amendment, I tried to, you guys, a couple of council members been asking for some changes to firework amendment, per, you know, to put a different, a full-fledged purchasing policy, so I just wanna put those on there for your consideration. Um, Waterloo actually did not change their fireworks ordinance at all.
Just gonna ask, I thought they were going back to just the fourth as well.
Yeah, and Cedar Falls did, which, um, I don't know if y'all know this, but Cedar Falls does a huge fireworks show every year. So while you're at the fireworks show, you get home, you can't set off fireworks yourself, so they, like, almost eliminated their, their, uh, chance for having fireworks. So on a personal level, um, so Waterloo is still the same as what we are. But I, you know, I know there's been a lot of concern with, with residents, especially ones that have passed or what have you. Um, Chief, do you wanna speak to the firework situation at all, to, you know, the chances of catching them in the act? What, you know, what is the percentage of that even happening, where do you have to?
Well, it's been, the county attorney has essentially told us that, uh, they're not gonna prosecute any fireworks violations unless you literally catch them lighting the firework. And that's kind of been the standing policy for quite a while now.
Yeah. Do you, can you say in your professional opinion that, you know, since they passed this and the first year was absolutely crazy, that it's mellowed out some?
Well, I gotta be honest with you, if I had my land, I'd get rid of it all together, but.
Okay.
I don't know, I mean, I guess it all depends on what you consider mellow.
Well, that first year, it was just nonsense.
There's that time where it's, it's like, you think it's World War Three going on, you know?
Well, and if, if memory serves, and wasn't simply just from the standard, it all labels an argument versus we want it, we don't because of PTSD and animals and people working and everything. If memory serves from last year, especially the reason we bring it back up was how it was labeled because of how the fourth fell last year, it was all weeknights. So the legal nights that you could set them off were weeknights and you only have one of them off. So now people that were working and anything, so it was more of, not only a consideration for those three days down to potentially one, but do we need to be three, four, and five, or is it the Saturday before and the Saturday after and the fourth? Or something like that to be considerate to those that have to work, so that was another thing that got brought up was how it landed last year. It was by that third day of just hearing constant fireworks, you know, I was back to work and my kids were up, and it's like, okay, I'm done with them for another year, so.
Me and I can please everybody all the time, you know, it's.
I would prefer one day, my animals went crazy for the three days till midnight whenever, I mean, it's just nonsense, I'm not telling a resident, but I had a lot of people call me complaining about numerous days for fireworks, and I'm a firm believer in celebrating the fourth. My initial thought would be to do it on the fourth, the hour is a lot, and it would be done with it, that's just my input as one person.
I, I also attend the Algren meetings, council meetings, if I remember correctly, they just did the fourth.
And that's the other thing, it'd be nice for us to align so that's not so confusing, 'cause I was even confused last year that I'm like, you can't, no, you can't, you know, and I'm telling people something incorrect.
Yeah, I know, give it a go.
Yep.
And, you know, honestly, I don't really think that's, that's unfair, because you get your majority of the fireworks set off that day anyway. They can do it, they can until midnight.
And I think the majority of people do follow the rules, you're always gonna have those few that are gonna do it whenever they wanna do it, you know, so.
And if you, if you wanna put it in ordinance form, I'll bring it to the next meeting.
Well, listen, I'm only one person, but I, that's my personal belief, I thought for years, I've just went along with it. My is right, and he, I think my neighborhood, the guys are very good about fireworks, but they go all day and night, and my dogs can never rest. And I know that's if you could even medicine drug them, but I'm not gonna drug my animals for a day of celebration in the community, but that's what I'd like to see as one resident, one day on the fourth, it's not a hurry of that.
One day should be adequate. For better or for worse, we can always change it back.
Yeah.
We do make a move and it turns out to be the worst thing ever, and everyone hates it because they won't go three days back, I'm sure they will let us go. So I, I'm open, I, you know, I, I, I don't have animals, I don't, you know, so I, for matter of speaking, if you don't have a dog in this fight, I have heard it from both sides, both sides. It was way too much, it was out of schedule, it was, it should just be one day, it should've just been on the weekends, so I mean, I've, I've heard it from multiple places, from multiple arguments.
Do you want the day before the fourth?
Uh, without, I said before.
The day before the day of the fourth, the third, the third and a half?
See, I don't, I, I would say because, like, people, and this is my opinion too, I mean, I may get, but, like, before the die, you have one day off. And everybody, you know, you only have a day, so by the time you go to sleep at night, if you work in the morning, you're not gonna stay up until midnight, but, but, wow.
You should.
You shouldn't.
You might.
Yeah, see, you know, I'd like to have like, at least like, sort of, four falls on November two to leave, and I'd like to have Monday to be able to do it. So that, you know, you can enjoy it and be out at ten o'clock and then off the fireworks, you know? But everything doesn't really, you know, that, I'm not, I'm not, either way, I just.
No, but I understand your, your way, yeah.
Well, in thinking of Saturday and Saturday, a lot of people work on weekends too.
Yes. Yep.
You know, your nurses, your doctors.
Good solid answer to us, that's just gonna be, this is the best thing ever.
Yeah. So people, it is, and we give them a little bit more options, but we don't, when we just do the fourth, and that's, you know, that will give the animals room, so I guess it's a.
And again, we can try, and if we get feedback, keeping that open, I'll have to write it back, don't get down.
So do you want the, do you want the, the curse round to be just for the July only, or do you wanna do just the third and the fourth?
I would like.
Do you wanna start out with the third and the fourth, or?
I would like.
Cuz that's reducing. Um.
But if Chris, he wants the third and the fourth, and I think the three days or more is ridiculous, I think that would be material, but I don't want, there's nothing we got going on, there is no way, I. I think one day would be sufficient myself, I mean, I, I don't, I don't shoot fireworks off, I can go, I go, my girl black my house, and I got a whole city in this lake. So I don't need to have three days or two day everything.
Wait, are we done, do we have to go on this?
No, 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 I'm just gonna bring it, uh, uh, ordinance to this meeting.
That's right. That's right.
I mean, you have time here, then you talk to people at your ward between now and then, you know, and all. Well, it's really maybe it's a network, so.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
We'll start, we'll, we'll start off that way.
Just the fourth?
Third and fourth.
Yeah, I didn't know, that's what I was asking, what you were putting into the ordinance, so that I know what to tell you. I, cuz I'm open, I mean, I, I.
I suppose there's one challenge, but Central, I just started from the report.
Yes.
And you vote on it?
I'm gonna put it on there, I'm very focused, well, it's one day.
Okay.
And this is a fair rate tag.
Well, it's, it's, right?
Okay.
Yeah. Social media.
Yeah, that's a good second.
Again, it's normal, but, but it's, if it's both of them, we want it together.
Saturday.
Your what?
Really?
Yes.
Must change. Are we on the, on there?
Yeah, we're on the number fifteen, uh, council to consider, um, purchasing policy. Um, you have one in your packet, I went through, this was the one that, you know, we looked at several months ago, um, the city of Waki, they were gracious enough to give us a word version, so I just went through and changed all the information that it would apply to the city of Evansdale. Um, you know, this is pretty much a, uh, first shot, and if you also look at your, I gave you what the current rate is for quotes and bids. Yeah. That's for, as you can see, uh, it went up again for January, in fact, for January twenty eighth, twenty twenty for thresholds, horizontal, um, competitive bid is sixty-five thousand, vertical, um, competitive bid is under ninety-six thousand.
There's things to do.
Yeah, cuz, well, when you're going through it, you see all these numbers, I took the numbers off of the state, this is the state numbers, so.
One.
No, that's, that's what I was looking at, well, first, look at this, this offer that.
Yeah.
One item that will pop out is just the language used, as we've even seen it happen recently, that we wanted these three bids. But there are times we don't, you know, sometimes we only get one, just no one else wants the bid.
Right.
The language, how I interpret it, states requires at least three, which means we wouldn't be able to honor anything unless we had three, so even if we wanted something done, then two, we could not take action, is how I interpret this.
Right.
So I just wanna be clear is that if we're putting it in that, there may be some things that that might tie our hands on formally.
Well, sometimes we can only get one.
Correct, yeah, that was so far.
Well, that's, and that's what I'm saying, we only have one.
Okay, so, the third is the required.
Our codes, and we have to have on the table.
Yeah, and I don't know.
We got there, something on with that.
Just.
I think if you have a paper trail typically, you know, like, if you tried and you're like, hey, I tried three places and it, yeah, absolutely, and that, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, attempting it for.
Emails, phone calls, yeah.
Or, you know, like.
That's where I just say, get some sort of language in this that states, in the situation of three bids were not received, but multiple, you know, contractors were solicited.
Yeah. Exactly. Yeah.
This is what we can do, you know, the council may choose to act without three bids, or just some, some sort of language that does tie our hands.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, employee must make an attempt to, to obtain like three bids, like make an attempt to get three bids, that's a tough.
Thing I struggle with is when you're going out for bids on things and it's a city project, I struggle with the fact that there's not people out there that won't bid on the work.
We've had it though.
We have.
I know, but I, I think we need to tighten the reins a little bit and try and learn to get at least two then, if we don't wanna go for three. Uh, so we have comparables to go against, rather than the same Joe Blow, he's a little bit, we gotta go with it, but we don't have to go with it. I do like this thing coming forward, I think it's gonna be a great tool, we just need to tweak it a little bit before we finalize.
I think it provides great direction on the, like, department heads feel, they say, okay, I know where to go and I know what to do, and then.
Yeah. Absolutely.
You know, like, if, if we can't get three bids, then as long as we have an explanation, you know, and we try.
Right, yeah.
But two, yeah, I mean, we should be able to do that.
Well, and, and, just so you guys know, cuz you can remember even just from this last year, when we were, with the Michigan Liv Station out, last August, we had one bid.
That's a good thing.
And that's, that's, that's professional format, that goes all over the state of Iowa, it, it's on the master builder site, where, um, contractors are, are checking on a daily basis. And, you know, even with our wastewater plant.
Well, it's wastewater plant, yeah, it's two.
Two bids?
Two.
Two bids on.
Just my interest was sky high.
On a nine point eight million dollar project.
And it's, I mean, I, I agree, I think it's getting increasingly more difficult just to get customer service anywhere.
Yeah. Oh, God.
So, I mean.
Amen.
We could all, I mean, if we have it diverted in there and we can't get it, then we can't get it, and if you have to look at, we can even more, further down the road, we can always do that as well, but.
And I'm still in favor of three, and I don't wanna see it reduced to two, I just wanna, how I read this, it doesn't, states requires, which means now we could not take action to accept a one or two bids if we don't have three.
Yeah.
It does tire.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Right.
And I actually think that's how the code was written, in there, like, you have like three bids and.
Or state contracts and government contracts, streets, the Davis Darby, all that, yes, we, yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm, like.
Bit like on their, you know, their promo bidding process, it's whoever bids it.
Yeah.
You know, there's no requirement there, so.
But it just has to be made, you can't just go to one and be done.
Was there any other items that you guys wanted to see changed in there besides that one?
That was the main one I had, was just, again, totally, I'm fine with it, the numbers make sense, the three bids, I'm still fine, it was just required, I didn't want it to tie our hands when we might only get one or two. So otherwise, yeah, most of them, the rest of them are pretty good.
Yeah.
Did it have an exception in there for the council to approve any of these amounts? I don't know if I read that, going through this, where if bids come in, the council has the, to approve the bids or have.
Process, yeah.
Yep. For all, all stages of dollars, I, I didn't quite see that.
Yeah, so like, I just scrolled and there was one higher, so section C, sub item F, as in Frank.
Yeah.
City council receives city engineer's report of bids received, then G is in George, city council passes or rejects resolutions to adopt land specifications forms, so on. So that was the formal process, there was one similar, I believe, in the informal.
And that's what it's required by state, the formal process.
Yeah, uh, so informal, section A, sub item three, subsection B is in void, the mayor shall, shall solicit city council affirmation of all contracts. So that's how I interpreted it, that it has to come.
I just wanna make sure it's in there.
Sure.
And I would actually like, you know, this was just the first, here, let's, let's start this, let's get it done, cuz I, I know it's important for all of us, um. I can make those changes, but I also would like our attorney to review it as well, so.
I like it, thanks for taking the time to do it.
Yeah, well, we're done with budgets, so I had all this extra turmoil in my hands. For both Dana and I. Okay, um, number sixteen, council to consider thirty mile, thirty mile per hour speed limits on West Gilbert Drive from Burr Oak to McCoy. Um, McCoy and Grand Boulevard, this is something that, um, I have, people have mentioned it to me throughout time. I think we've been very successful with the increase in the speed limit on Evans to thirty from twenty-five, it's easy to obtain. I mean, I, I find myself going twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and it's, it's, it's just easy to obtain. When you're getting in those twenty-five speed limits, there's gonna be people who don't care at all, but it, it's easier to go down West Gilbert, going thirty miles an hour than it is twenty-five.
Well, doesn't West Gilbert have like twenty-five in one spot and then thirty in another?
It does.
So I'd rather just see all thirty.
Yeah, it, right, actually, at Burr Oak, just beyond Burr Oak, it, it turns to thirty. I, I, I just think if it's, I don't know if it's psychological, but people do.
It's the residential area that's more condensed or more, this way, it was on that way, but I agree, I don't see a reason.
And I also, you know, since, you know, Algren owns half of McCoy, um, I think one of the reasons was because of the, the preschool, or at one point, that was a school, um, Algren School. And they also said, you know, uh, Mayor Smack stated that she would go to her council to increase that to thirty on their side as well.
I did talk to them, and overwhelmingly, they were against it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh. All that.
We do.
That, well, that would be.
Only southbound traffic.
Northbound.
Hey, you wanna have some fun, watch the police pull their hair out too.
So I guess we won't be touching the court at this time.
Which I find a little surprising that they were so, so against it because they did the same thing on Lafayette, uh, they agreed.
Right, I know they did.
They increased the speed there because they.
Yeah.
So, but.
Yeah.
So, but they did not like the idea of doing it on McCoy.
I, I'll tell you what's crazy, um. I have, when I go to the doctor in Cedar Falls, Rainbow Drive, which the houses are all right there, is thirty-five all the way through there. You got a major school. Now, when you slow down during that time.
Mm-hmm.
But it just, it just totally floored me, that I wanna, we can increase somebody's speed limits to thirty at least, it's just easier for.
They don't go the speed limit on Grand anyways.
Or McCoy.
There you go, forty, fifty.
And I realize this, you know, it's dying.
When you gotta have a.
Every day I want people passing each other, breaking down the certain.
We have.
It's fucking the same people.
That you probably might.
Well, I got, I can add a question to you.
Sure.
I know we've talked about it. Could your cousins maybe, I'm sure they do, but on Evans from, I said out there in my. From nine, ten o'clock on till eleven, twelve o'clock, people are going to third shift or something. People fly down Evans in that time, 'cause that road isn't smooth around the corner and you hear them hitting it like a semi. And I mean, they are just flying. Could somebody sit there once in a while on Nema or somewhere and just see? I bet you find out you have a lot of speeders late at night.
Sure.
I appreciate it. Yeah.
I would, I have a question on this because all your streets that you've listed are newer streets, they're wider. But except for the one section of Grand Boulevard that is narrow like a residential side street. Is that gonna make a difference? I mean, I, like Jan says, I mean, we get people speeding up down the road all the time, but. I mean, is it something?
I mean, it's, it's a main thoroughway and I was, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm not recommending changing any of, you know, thoroughways by children's, you know, by the schools or anything like that. Um, but in, in even Central, I mean, because it, it is, you know, leading to the school.
I, I was just looking at the fact that all these other streets are wider.
It's not as wide. Yeah.
But that section of Grand from Central to Gilbert.
It's not as wide.
Is not as wide, it's like a normal side street.
Yeah.
I mean, it.
This is, this is a, this is a discussion.
Right, it's just something to think about.
This is something to think about completely.
Sidewalks.
One. On one side of the.
We got one sidewalk that is the completion only to Central and then.
No, the whole way.
No, Central to Gilbert.
Flip sides.
West Gilbert.
Yes, but then is it flip sides from?
No, it's all ways, whole sides.
No.
Flip sides inside, yeah.
It's not, yeah.
I know McCoy has, it's like the open bike lane, so it's on the roadway, it's not a sidewalk for a chunk of it.
Yeah.
So we'd have to be careful there. I'm just thinking about if we're increasing speed limits and we have no place to get any pedestrians off our streets.
Oh, oh, you're saying on the, okay, you're saying on. Right. Right.
The sidewalk on McCoy stops at Interstate Route.
Yes, it does.
Yep.
Yep.
So then there's a lot open. Again, and again, I, I know McCoy might be a hard one, obviously Algren's not in favor, but just, I'm trying to think of other.
Yeah.
Just precautions where Evans has a solid sidewalk, had a couple stop signs throughout, it's like, okay, Grand has it as well, but the sidewalk, make sure it's covers much. Just little things to try to make sure that. What problems will we cause?
Safety.
Yeah.
Or does Algren, what's part of the street that they own or control?
On McCoy?
Yeah, I know on McCoy, but I thought the, the street was all on Evans now.
On the east side.
The street is.
No, it's, um, from the interstate, from the interstate to Lafayette, they own the east side. There's your boundary map right there.
Change the color.
Tell them we'll take over the responsibility. No, they won't. Just food for thought, um, if you guys think about it, maybe give me some feedback, I, I definitely appreciate it.
Well, are there very many speeding tickets given on that road? I mean, what do people normally drive on? That would be, what would be interesting.
I set my cruise, to be honest, again, at like twenty-seven.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, to raise the speed, how many people are already driving that or over?
Yeah.
So right now it's twenty-five and they're driving forty, so you raise it to thirty, are they gonna be driving forty-five, fifty?
I don't think we, I don't think we really know, had that, uh, with Evans when we increased the, the rate. I sat out there quite a bit and it seemed like, uh, most people were following the new adjustment, yeah.
The speed limit.
And you yourself, it's almost impossible to do twenty-five. Especially with the newer cars, it's, you have to set your cruise if you wanna do twenty-five.
Granted, I think to get a more accurate reading, you probably gotta do it with a spot card, but.
That's what those speed signs are for, I know the ones down at Grand and Gilbert now and, have we got the second one yet?
Yeah, that's at West Gilbert and the other one's on Roosevelt.
Yeah, we have two.
Yep. Okay.
I would reconsider to make a motion to change the speed of it on, on Gilbert to thirty mile an hour all the way through from.
Okay, this is just a consideration, but I would do the, the formal, I, the ordinance, that has to be done by ordinance. I could put it on the next agenda just to, to handle that.
What's the speed limit?
Is that, is the street you're going thirty mile an hour and then all of a sudden gets down to twenty-five?
Yep.
I know it's more condensed there with residential housing, but, um, streets.
Sidewalk all the way through on the south side.
At the end. Not like, buddy.
Plus it's wider.
Mm-hmm, and it's curb and gutter full all the way across, yeah.
Okay, I'll put that to ordinance and just let me know your thoughts or maybe see the behaviors on the other ones. Number seventeen, uh, council to consider an increase for park board members to fifty dollars per meeting. This, this is kind of the how this all came about. Um, we have some park board members, um, they are elected officials. Um, council has paid fifty dollars a meeting. We do have some park board members that are doing quite a bit of work. There, they had some things that they kinda, in the past, there was just an unspoken rule, you know? Like some things that they had benefits for, you know, 'cause they spend a lot of time. Especially, I think you know that, being on the parks board, they spend a lot of time at Deerwood Campground in the summer and getting it ready in the spring and closing it up in the fall and. I, it's just a thought, you know, of course, that has done by ordinance as well.
And that to me, if you pass it, it couldn't take effect and not do the next.
That is correct.
Right.
It doesn't. But it is.
What are you gonna do with the other boards?
It's twenty dollars.
What are you gonna do with the other boards, they're gonna say, well, we got this in person, we gotta pay.
Well, they're, they're, they're the only other, um, elected board, they're an elected board.
Yeah, I know that.
And all the rest of the boards are not elected. But they're elected by the residents of the city, so.
I don't have nothing to get paid on, but that's what I was saying, that's gonna start something where you're, all board members, they all don't have their pay.
Well, you know, like I. Yeah, it, there's just not, no other boards that we have painted in the past, that, that is strictly voluntary. So, I mean, they have to do work just like the council does as far as getting elected.
What's current state? What's the current state right now?
Twenty.
Twenty.
That's been since two thousand twelve.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The only I had on that when I see on agenda is I wish it would come at the budget time.
Yeah.
If I wish the thought process of the two fifty a month instead of the, whatever it is, twenty. 'Cause it's kinda, we're, we're going, we're putting the cart ahead of the horse and we've talked a lot about that here at budget time and after the fact, I just wish I'd have seen that in front of them. I know it's not a lot of money, I know you do a lot of work, I know a bunch of other people, I know you do a lot. But I just wished that it would've came to us.
Well, first of all, Steve, this actually did not come from the park board.
Okay.
This was a discussion, this was a discussion between Deanne and I and that we had over the weekend or last week about camping fees and stuff that you partook in when you were on the park board.
I was not being a.
And now we have to pay, okay? And what I'm trying to do is get more, uh, hopefully more, uh.
Numbers of your board.
You.
Involved.
That work.
Doing the same thing. And, and maybe, maybe, I mean, Deanne's the one that brought it up to us. To me, and I says, well, I don't know, I mean, we can see, I mean, obviously it doesn't take effect until after the next election, so it's not really gonna affect us this year, so, um, but like I said, this, this was not brought up by the park board. I mean, it, we didn't even discuss it at, at budget time.
I didn't see it in your minutes, as my.
Yeah, right. So, I mean, it's, I mean, if you don't, you don't, if you do, you do. I mean, that's the way it is right now, I mean, it's not.
It's not gonna make a difference.
It's not gonna make a difference to me because I'm gonna probably still continue to do what we need to do. And hopefully encourage the other park board members to do the same.
Do you think that thirty dollar a month increase is gonna get your fellow people on the board to do more? 'Cause I know you struggle with that, we've talked about it.
Yeah.
I mean, is that really gonna be a bang, that they're gonna?
I've got a couple right now that are stepping up a little bit more. I've noticed that, especially, uh, the spring. Um, one practically every day comes down through the Deerwood, uh, when we were trying to get things organized and set up. Another one actually started last year and was coming through Deerwood quite frequently. So, I mean, we're getting there, but.
It offsets having to pay.
Yeah.
It offsets having to pay a little bit. I mean, I mean, I'm assuming you got, we pay seventeen fifty, just like everybody else down there. But for the last couple of years, and Tom has spearheaded the whole sewer project that's going on down there. The, the project manager calls him to go down there and mark the spots for the driveways or we wanna do this, or Tom stopped down there and they're putting in the wrong type of sewer. You know, it, it was something that saved the project three thousand dollars. Tom's like, no, that's not how our sewers are, go over there and look on this side. And, I mean, yes, he's doing it, I guess he wants it to be done well, but there's no benefit. So if you raise it at least to the fifty dollars, okay, instead of twenty, that's extra per month or per year that we get that we can put towards our seventeen fifty that we have to pay.
I'm just, I, my only concern was, I wish it would've come up in budget time in conversation away.
You know, and it doesn't cover, I mean, honestly, like this year, I mean, we volunteer in the sense of, Tom and I do. I do the signage down there, I buy it online, I do the vinyl on there. We bought shirts for the, all the, um, maintenance and the park staff down there. And so we personally did that all about, all out of our money, that fifty dollars doesn't near cover per month.
Oh, I, I fully agree with that, the money don't cover.
I mean, we've already spent that, any activities that happen down there through the campground, um, the couple of times, uh, at least once a month, I do children's activity and I pay for all that stuff out of my own pocket, so.
Is, is this right incentive? Is there something else we should be looking at?
Free camping.
The problem is like, it's, it, um, we get into.
A reduced camping.
I have a, an attorney's opinion and our auditor's opinion and then I have the attorney's opinion and I reached out to our, um, city auditor on this as well because I mean, that help offset because they are, you know, doing so much down there and it's frustrating that, um, that we can't provide more towards their camping, but we can't. 'Cause it's, it's considered, it's considered public purpose.
You're elected official.
You're an elected official. Even if you weren't an elected official, you have to think about this. When you're, especially when you're elected official, whatever I'm doing in the city, I have to offer to everybody in the city. Well, we're not gonna offer free camping to everybody in the city, that would defeat our purpose frame and having a campground, so.
Right.
I mean, there's no way of getting around that whatsoever. I mean, I have thought through it, I've talked to other people about it, talked to our training, talked to the auditor, so.
Is that, have that board ever become non-elected and then you get the camping free? They weren't elected board and then they had a camping free for being a volunteer, like a lot of the boards are? Is that an option we could look at?
But it, back to the point is, whenever, whatever you're offering a, a volunteer or a board member of any kind, you have to offer the same thing too.
I think it's probably washed at that point because if.
Yeah.
If, if they're paying for camping, obviously there's income coming in versus donating it and not paying up for the meeting, well, that spot would be filled one way or the other, most likely, from the history of the campground so far, if they weren't the ones taking the spot, most likely someone else was, so. You could argue the, well, I could pay you here, I could give it to you free, but either way.
But I can also argue on the other half of that is that, um, we have not, in, in my time on the park board.
Which is twenty.
Twenty plus years, I don't, I, I have to go back and look. I don't recall a time when that campground has been completely full. So there's always a spot.
Okay.
Okay? And we've even got a few hidden spots that people don't know about because of how logistics is and how things are set up down there that we could pull a camper into if we needed to. So, um, like I said, there is, there, in, in my time, we have never been completely full. But we've had it turn somebody away unless the, the unit was too big to go onto one of these other spots. So it's not like we're taking up a spot.
Yeah, and I guess let me be clear, I was not arguing or arguing a case against it, I'm just saying whether we.
So. Yeah. Right.
I, I see what the mayor was getting at then, whether we pay you for a meeting or we give you free camping and then you pay for, or you, meaning you pay for your camping, we give you free camping, that's what I'm saying.
And I. Yeah. But I would not, I, because of the cost of the camping, obviously, you're talking a lot more than what you guys make a month, you know, a month, so. I would not suggest even going that route. I mean, I'd almost be halfway embarrassed to even ask for that because you guys don't even get it, so, um. Like I said, it's entirely up to you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the same if you guys tell me no, or you wanna look at this later on.
We're still gonna pay our seventeen fifty.
Yeah, we're still gonna pay our seventeen fifty, we're still gonna, I'm still gonna do the work that I've done the last, especially nine years that I've been the chairman, so. I mean. That's, that's just the way I am.
Tom, I don't have a problem with the increase, I just wish it would've come in front of us before the budget, so we knew it in front of time, instead of behind the time.
Yeah, I understand that.
The only thing I have.
I understand that and, and I'm sure Deanne probably understands that too, you know, so.
That's all I'm saying about it.
Well, it would, it would actually have been nice to, you know, to do something this year. Because, you know, if you can't do it, if you can't get any benefit, I mean, 'cause you are doing quite a lot for the campground.
Well, it's not just him.
It's not just the camper.
Well.
It's actually.
Angels Park.
Angels Park, softball, we're overseeing that now this year. Um, that's been a chore this spring a little bit and, and then, um, we may talk a little bit more about it here shortly, so, um. It, I mean, it takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
So.
That's, I, so it would've been nice to be able to do something earlier.
It's not gonna go in fact until January first anyway, and it's only giving me six months of the budget, that's gonna be different.
Right. And I'm up for election, I mean, I may run, I may not run, I don't know, I haven't decided yet. Deanne, Deanne is giving me dirty looks every month.
So fifty bucks a meeting, you stay, is that what you're saying?
That's very right.
You may find that tonight.
I mean, that's up to, that's up to the electorate though too. They have to, they have to reelect me though too, vote me back in, so.
Yep.
You're shooting that.
Well, you know, I'm, I get the, I'm getting the consensus that we're gonna go ahead and put it in his door and it's on the next meeting, so. Maybe we'll do that. Um, mayor council reports, um, I did wanna talk to you about some good news. Where, um, we had our, um, technical meeting for our Metropolitan Trans, um, Metropolitan Transportation. Um, and that was last Thursday. And we did, we got voted as one to go forward with the West Gilbert project. So we got two point four million already for that project and that's the eighty percent of the project. So, um, and that was, the MPO Policy Board hasn't voted on it yet, but, um, the technical committee has. So it looks really good for us, um, because that is a, a first, you know, we were put in first place for all the other projects that were being part of the technical committee at that time. Um, and this is the reconstruction of Grand and this is not until FY twenty-seven.
You're over.
I mean, yeah.
You're over.
Yeah, sorry, Tom, sorry for the false.
We're still waiting for curb and gutter.
Yeah, yeah.
That's been, it's been thirty years, I promise you that.
So anyway, West Gilbert, and that's from River Forest Road, um, to just, um, East of Grand, so. So anyway, West Gilbert and that's from River Forest Road to just East of Grand, so. That was my, and this is my new nuisance abatement board. I guess it is a door, but I'm calling it my board. So we had this gentleman build a shed on city land, cause we have a city easement there. And this was his shed that he built and he had his own little campground going on here. If you can see the pictures, wind piles. He only, he even built his own shelters and this is what it looks like now, so. Thanks to Chris and his crew. And Steve, son tomorrow, for keeping at it. We started, we've been dealing with this guy since Brian was in office. So it's been quite, it's been quite an journey, so that's the second one of our bigger ones that we've been working on actively. We've been working on that since September.
Richie Schlieber now in the woods.
I don't know.
I know there's spots open in Deerwood.
Roosevelt Court.
Ron, there's spots open in Deerwood. I heard it tonight.
Okay, for the rest of all of you, we're going into closed session.
Wait, I got something, I got.
Oh, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'll be, I'm sorry, but it's two, no, it's good, I think. Um, one is, uh, the. From what I heard, and I don't know, and maybe you should correct me by the way I'm talking, but, um, the Cedar Valley Sports thing. They actually were like trying to figure out when tournament dates were or when to do tournaments and when, when not, so that they wouldn't like be on the same weekend as the girls' ride. And someone told me that they were able to get it worked out where they're on separate weekends, which is, I think is good because everybody knows that, you know, it's dear and dear to their heart for the girls' ride. So that brings in a lot of business. And then also the tournament seating brings, I don't have people too, so I was kind of happy to hear that. So I thought that was a really good thing, so I just kinda wanted to say thanks to the Cedar Valley Sports people.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that was really good. And then, of course, I heard from the library that they had an Easter egg hunt and like over a hundred people showed up.
Yeah.
I thought that was pretty amazing, cause last year only like twelve people showed up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
So I thought that was pretty cool because that brings in some good little ones probably for egg hunting.
Yeah.
So that was good. And then the last, but you know, probably not the best one, the water main, the water problem. I just wanted to let everybody know that I went ahead and called and talked to someone on the water board just to ask them about what the problem was. And I think we had a really good discussion and I really think that they're gonna work on trying to have better communication with the city and I'm really kind of happy about that. Because I feel like in the past, it's been not very good and I feel like it's just been a huge headache. And so I would like to see these two people, these two entities like be more civil to each other and work together and try to get this stuff done in a, in a good way. Because like when that, that water main broke and they shut down the water on Easter weekend, you know, like everybody got calls. And no one knew why it was happening. And the water department didn't communicate to the city and the mayor was getting a bunch of them. And then the water department was getting a ton of calls. It was just like a nightmare, so I think that if we can try to work together and get things better. I think it would be beneficial. So I had a really nice conversation and there was some comments that I seen that shouldn't have been happening on social media from employees. And I think that's gonna be addressed too, just so everybody knows that I think that the water board is really trying hard and they're gonna try to make things better, so. I'm looking forward to seeing some better working relationships out of that and so I'm hoping that everybody else is aware of that too.
So speaking of that, one of the communication things that got brought about because people knew, you know, the calls on the first water main break were just extraordinary. It was non-stop all day long. Why are you just contacting us on social media? I don't go on Facebook every morning. You know, why are you just contacting me on KWWL? I don't even have that stationed on my TV. So we've, we've been doing a heavy push on social media in our office, there's signs all over our office, on our website, it's Alert Iowa. You can choose for them to alert you about anything. We work with, hand in hand with Black Hawk County Mercy Management. And we send them the notice, they, they text to everybody who has signed up, so.
Text, email, and voice if you choose any of those three, if you can enroll in any or all.
Yeah. Yes.
And I think it's hard to hit everybody because like my mom and dad don't have social media and my husband doesn't, so he didn't even know about it, right? Well, I have it and I knew, but I didn't know it was gonna be on Saturday, but also KWL had it on the first time, but not the second time. And then, you know, like, so some people were getting it from all over and, you know, like now that they have the alert and if it's on KWL.
Yeah.
And if it gets communicated to the city, we can certainly do our best to support our water department as well if they communicate to us.
Right.
And then we can be able to be working hand in hand and hope it go better, like at least a little sooner.
Right.
The other thing related to that too, they gotta have, you know, one of the managers of the OP stock entity. The city said they could open up the next day so they get everything fixed, chicken, everything else, everything going out, so they're ready to go and they close it down.
What's happening?
So they had to throw all that stuff away.
No, no, go ahead, Tom.
Um, in addition to what Christie said with Cedar Valley U Sports, they're, they have pretty close to seven hundred kids this year.
Oh, that's fantastic.
They are growing faster than I think what they expected, cause I think last year they only had around four hundred and fifty, five hundred kids.
Wow.
From what it sounds, but this year they're up over, they're, they're close to seven hundred people, so they're looking for coaches, they're looking for umpires, they're looking for volunteers.
Coaches mostly at the younger level.
Yep, across the board, so if you're interested in, in that, get ahold of somebody and they can get you.
Isn't it, is it cleanup days this weekend for them? Are they doing the field cleanups or not?
Yeah. The field cleanups have been, have pretty much been ongoing. I would encourage you to go down there and take a look. I think you'd be pleasantly surprised by how the grounds look. They're, they're really coming together. They're doing the field work, the ag, the ag lime and stuff like that out in the city, they're working all the fields. As best they can right now. They're gonna do it, probably more thorough job come fall after the season. Because obviously we're too close to actually getting there and till up those fields like they're supposed to be every, every couple of years. And so you'll probably see the field again after the season, but they should be a lot safer than what they were last year.
Is the bathroom safer?
Concessions.
Is the bathroom safer? Is it the urinals?
That has been fixed.
No, so that's all, that's been fixed. As a matter of fact, I think they're looking at painting the inside of the bathrooms and everything else to make it look a little cleaner and stuff in there too.
Concessions will have been painted.
Yep.
Looking forward to seeing that, cause it'll be a really good, nice change, very good for ourselves.
I think overall probably attitude and atmosphere, I think will.
I grew up with it, as I'm sure many people do, and then many people on the board now with the, you know, Cedar Valley U Sports, I'll talk to, I know I played ball as a kid. It's just that I don't remember extra drama, problems or anything coming. It was to the point to where in the season, done playing ball. I mean, that's all I remember. It was only down and play ball. Done. There wasn't anything extra, there wasn't, and yeah, I mean, we'll call because I can't, and this is any sports anymore, but there wasn't fights between adults. For a kid's sport when we're just down there to have fun and learn, you know, and these types of things, so. Yeah, it just, it needs to be about the fun. That's the whole thing, so.
No, people are gonna see that.
I hope so. Both my kids are gonna be there, so. I'll let you know.
Yep.
They try too. I can't, I gotta stay married to two steams. They try, they try real hard.
That was all I got, sorry, I just wanted.
No, no, that's good, that's good things. So we are, council is gonna go into a closed session right now, so we, I'll take a motion to close our regular scheduled meeting. All in favor? Opposed?
Thank you all. Have a good night.